I'll call to order this regular monthly meeting of the Ellsworth City Council for Monday, November 16, 2020. First item, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the public, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we continue under the emergency orders in accordance with an act to implement provisions necessary to health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Maine in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency as enacted to read section G-1, one MRSA, section 403-A, public proceedings through remote access during declaration of state emergency due to COVID-19. The meeting will be held live at One City Hall Plaza in the City Hall Council Chambers with only the allowable number of participants according to the governor's executive orders. Citizens may email questions and public comments on the public hearing agenda items as well as other items this evening to myself at dhamilton@elsworthmain.gov. Prior to and throughout the duration of the meeting, the meeting will be broadcast live on the City of Ellsworth Maine Facebook page and YouTube page as well as recorded, made available live on Spectrum Channel 1303. I would ask if you send in comments to please identify your place of residence so that we have that information as we would during any live presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add an emergency item to the agenda this evening to deal with the heating issue at HCTC.
Motion.
Second.
A second. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that item?
Hi.
It's unanimous. All councils are present, by the way. Unanimous to add an agenda item that's not on the agenda, it needs to be a unanimous vote, which it was. Thank you. Item three, rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and any other rules that we adopt at the annual organizational meeting. Item four is adoption of minutes from the following meetings of the Ellsworth City Council, October 19, 2020, regular council meeting, and October 29, 2020, special council meeting.
Move to table.
A motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of tabling? All those unanimous. Item five, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, councilors. I have a couple of announcements for the upcoming holiday season. Happy to announce that we will be having a tree lighting at SKW Park, and it's going to be on the 28th of November at 4:30 PM. We will not be having the standard tree lighting with a significant crowd and for folks gathering, but we feel it's important to continue with that tradition. There will be a few people in attendance, but the numbers will be low enough so that distancing can be accommodated easily in that area. In addition to that, the Heart of Ellsworth is working on --
Join the meeting.
In fact, today I noticed that they were working on lighting the poles down Main Street, and the anticipation is that we'll be able to coordinate the two activities and that after the tree lighting, the Main Street lights will be activated as well. In addition to that, we also have are moving forward with plans for the Christmas parade on the 5th of December. And before folks completely lose their mind, the concept behind the Christmas parade has been very well thought out by members of the Recreation Committee and myself to put a great deal of effort into maintaining safety as part of this parade. We've extended the route for the parade, so it's going to come the length of High Street, down Main Street, and up State Street. This will give folks an opportunity to watch the parade from vehicles or in small unit family gatherings. And will be there'll be a heavy police presence on Main Street during the onset before the parade to make sure that there aren't larger social gatherings going on on Main Street. So we'll be sure to spread people out, the ones who do come out in person to watch the parade. And we just feel that it's it's an important part of our community to kick off the holiday season, and we feel that we can do it safely. And so unless things change, we are constantly keeping an eye on it and paying attention to it. Unless things change, that is the plan for now on December 5. In addition to that, we also have wreath across America, America, excuse me, coming through on December 13 at 9:00 AM, anticipated 9:00 AM. Again, due to COVID, unfortunately, there will not be a gathering as there has been in the past at the Main Coast Mall, but I have been told by the organizers that they do want to do a, as they put it, slow roll down High Street in hopes that folks will in similar fashion come out to show their support in their vehicles and be able to see the procession as it goes by. And again, that was in December 13. In addition to that, I just wanted to say a few words about COVID and the situation that's going on in our community, and let folks know that the city government is keeping a very close eye on the COVID situation. We're made where whenever there's a outbreak in our community. We knew early on about the outbreak at Kids' Peace, and as such, we're responding to those incidences. We're receiving many complaints through the state about folks not wearing masks and other things of that nature, and we go out, we send folks out either through the code enforcement or the police department and meet with those businesses, encourage them, educate them, provide them with necessary materials if they need it to keep themselves and their employees safe. Likewise, here at City Hall, we've increased our mandatory mask wearing for all of our employees whenever they're forward-facing with customers. And in addition to that, all of our employees outside in the community, when they're outside of their vehicles or their independent workspaces, they're also required to wear masks. So we're doing our part to make sure that we keep our community safe and our employees safe, and we'll continue to monitor very closely and alter our behavior and our policies as we see fit. That's all I have, sir.
Any questions? So I just acknowledge that the steps that you're taking here in terms of responding to concerns that have come in and providing education and whether it's through code enforcement or police is consistent with how the state is also responding to those types of situations where education is the primary. And I think I just that's important to note is that that consistency in terms of the state and local working together and approaching it from the same perspective. Thank you for that work. All right. Item six, committee reports. First item is to appoint councilors to the various committees. So as we identified at the organizational meeting, the Finance Committee will be Council Blanchett, Council Grindel, and myself with Council Miller as the alternative. Human Services Committee will be Council Kaplan, Council Phillips, and Council Lyons. Human Resources Committee will be Council Blanchett, myself, and Council Grindel. Streetlights Committee will be Council Blanchett, Council Kaplan, and Council Miller. Library Special Collections will be Council Blanchett. The Capital Planning Committee will be myself, Council Phillips, and Council Blanchett. The HCTC Committee is no longer operating, so that will be brought together if needed in the future. The Solar Committee is also has wrapped up, so that that will be a disbanded committee. The Recreation Commission will be represented by myself and Council Miller. Harbor Commission, Council Lyons and Council Phillips. Historic Preservation Commission, Council Miller. Solid Waste, Council Blanchett and Council Kaplan. Local Roads, Council Blanchett, Council Phillips, and Council Lyons. The Public Safety Planning, that committee is no longer meeting, so that's disbanded. The Emergency Medical Services Committee, Council Blanchett, Council Kaplan, and Council The EBDC, the Business Development Corporation, and Council Phillips, have you been representing us? Yes, it's Council Phillips and interim city manager Glenn Moser. The PDC TC Cable TV, Council Grindel. Support Funding for the Library Committee, Council Grindel and Council Kaplan. And we will make a future appointment to be represented on the Frenchman Bay Partners. Any questions, councilors? All right. Any councilors attend any committee meetings? So there was one meeting, an ad hoc committee, the cross, we're calling it for lack of better term, the Crosswalk Committee that formed. We've had one meeting, and it really, I would sum it up, and I would ask the other councilors who are present to add to it, but it was really focused on just kind of grounding the committee in terms of what we wanted to accomplish, and we really are trying to approach it as a unified group to look at some of the issues and concerns that were raised during the discussion and the request. So we spent the first part of the meeting really just trying to identify those concerns, to identify some tasks to move it forward. So that's where we've started to really look at regulations, ordinances, and then we will come back together and continue the process. Any councilors want to add to that? Okay. All right. So no other meetings. Item seven are citizens' comments. This is a portion where citizens can comment on any item that's not on the agenda. You will have opportunity to address items that are on the agenda if you choose at that time as well, so I will open it up for citizens' comments. Anybody present want to make a comment?
May I take this off when I speak? Okay, good. Thank you. David Burks, Ellsworth. Good evening, council members. I'm not sure how many of you have passed by Whiting Park and noticed how our nation's flag flies from the flagpole so generously donated by the Blanchett family. As a veteran, and for me personally, there is nothing more enduring or deserves respect than our flag. Over 16 million people, military and civilians of all races and creeds, gave their lives giving birth to our nation at the old North Bridge to defending our freedom in the mountains of Afghanistan. Many of our community members right here in Ellsworth and in Hancock County have stood and continue to stand by that flag in conflict and in peace, and sadly, many came home under that flag. Please indulge me just for a moment so my grandson Brayden can give you just a brief history of these heroes from Hancock County in our community.
Did you know there are 123 Mayners who earned our nation's highest award, the Congressional Medal of Honor? Six of them are from Hancock County. There are Captain John Bigford from Chiemont, Sergeant Major William Hinks of Bucksport, Seaman John Mack of Brooksville, Sergeant Otis Roberts of Sangerville, and Colonel Andrew Spurling of Cranberry Isles, all served in the Civil War. Sergeant Clarence Condon of Brooksville served in the Philippine-American War of 1899, 1902. Mr. Delmont Merrill was an Ellsworth citizen who served on Iwo Jima. He was one of the lucky ones who returned home and served your community for many years. Councilman Mark and my grandpa went to school with Petty Officer Second Class Michael Davis, who gave his life in the service of our country at the age of 25 on April 2, 1982. I'm sure you all can think of several veterans who stood by our flag and returned to serve your community, like Mr. Lyons and Mr. Miller. It is the ones who gave their all that we should remember every time we pass by Whiting Park or see our flag on display like that one there in the corner. Or flying freely from a staff or pole. Thank you for listening. Here's my grandpa.
Thank you. For that bit of history, with that history in mind, I would like to point out a need regarding the flag that flies at Whiting Park. Current regulations state the flag should fall freely, freely being the key word. The landscaping, as nice as it is, does not allow enough space for the drip lines, which now are encroaching on the flag's ability to fall and fly freely. May I suggest the trees be cut down in the near future so the project does not become more costly as the drip lines grow larger over time and impede the flag's ability to fly? A hedge of boxwoods or the same type of perennials will look nice in that area. This action will greatly improve the appearance of the park and, more importantly, help the city to comply with flag regulations and properly honor those who have served and continue to serve our community by allowing our flag to fall and fly freely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may make one comment, please. Eight years ago, my brothers and I purchased that flagpole and the base for the city and gave it to them. I worked, I own a business directly across the street, and it bothered me at the time that such a beautiful park did not have a flagpole. It screamed for one. The day it was put in, it looked perfect, as if it had been there forever, and it looked that way for several years. In those years, though, the trees have grown in height. That flag does not fly freely, even in a breeze. It scrapes along the top of especially one of the trees adjacent to it. I believe it's time for that tree to go. They can make new trees every day. They can make new flags and flagpoles every day. They cannot make new soldiers who give their lives up for this country that come home under that flag. So I want to applaud Mr. Burks and his two grandchildren for coming in and bringing it to our attention, and I will do everything I can to see that that flag flies freely, literally and figuratively. Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of comments that have come in that I will read. First one is from John Stein on Franklin Street. "I'm curious as to how the search for the new city manager is going, and if the recent loss of our city planner and need to fill that position will hinder the efforts to find a new city manager. I wonder if the councilors would speak to what they might be looking for in a new city planner. It's my understanding that the planner's job is to focus on our city's comprehensive and strategic plans, which include things like walkability, riverfront development, and bolstering downtown residences. I know the pandemic creates a lot of immediate issues, and I appreciate the council's focus on these over the past eight months or so, but I believe it's important for us not to lose sight of the long-term intentional development of our city, and I hope that a new city planner Councilor Glendel, could you give a quick update on the search?
So we have, we have interviews this week, Tuesday and Thursday, so this city manager search is continuing as planned. And as far as the city planner, that's up to the interim city manager to, I believe it's been advertised, I've seen it, so we're moving forward with that as well.
Thank you. To date, I believe we've received nine applications for the city planner position. Thank you. Also received another comment, and this person would like to stay anonymous, and I will respect that, and the comment is, "I have major concerns with the recent COVID spikes and our town still having a parade. Just because we stretch it out doesn't eliminate community spread. Why is this a good idea to have people gather to walk down the road and have more gathered to watch them? I'm a cancer patient, and I get we want the holiday spirit, but at what cost?" So I will just comment that I certainly appreciate the concern about safety and health, and I just want to echo what City Manager Moser commented on. The committee is still meeting and looking at all of the facts, and will make a decision on whether or not there's a safety risk. What we are committed to is making sure that it is, it complies with all of the executive orders and safety procedures that are identified by the CDC and the state. And if we can't make that happen, then it won't happen. Being outside, there's limits on gathering sizes. This will be spread out over a large area, and as we've noted, the police will be in place to make sure that that does in fact happen. So it is being looked at. There's very much a consideration for people's safety, and we'll continue to look at that to see if we can find that balance between having an event like that, but we absolutely want to make sure that the event stays within the defined parameters that have been set by the CDC and the state. And if it can't, then it won't happen. But at this time, we believe that it will.
Chairman Hamilton?
Yes.
I also wanted to add, they mentioned walking. There will not be any walking in this parade.
That's an excellent point. And we certainly will, one of the things we'll be putting out in advance of the parade are the safety requirements for all spectators, so we'll masking and distancing so that the community knows what to expect before arriving. So we hope that will come together in that manner. All right, more comments. So this is coming through from Representative Grohowski. "Hello, as a daughter of a veteran and granddaughter of a veteran, both of whom love and have loved our country and our natural world, I respectfully ask that the council consider moving the flagpole rather than removing the tree." Okay, this is not for this meeting. I thought we shouldn't read that. Okay, so that's what I have for comments to this point. Anyone else in the room have a comment? All right, so I would like to just take a quick minute just to make a general comment that I've received some emails and had some conversations with individuals just about things that have been happening in terms of the tone and tenor, and so I just wanted to put this out there for the community. So our nation, state, and community has endured a lot over the past eight months. People generally come together during times of crisis, and this has been true during the events we have experienced this past year. We have witnessed resiliency, innovation, unity, and heroism. However, we have also witnessed the worst that can be as human beings. We've replaced questions with accusations, kindness with cruelty, and acceptance with personal destruction. These types of acts are coming from all people, not just individuals aligned with certain political parties. Our community has the opportunity to reject the type of social media rhetoric that I think we've all seen, that have been focused not on building understanding but on destroying individuals, their careers, attacking their family, or engaging in hate and harassment. We don't have to agree. In fact, the community is much stronger when we bring different perspectives to the table. My simple request is that instead of putting something on social media that attacks, defames, and hurts another person, why not seek out conversations with people to gain a better understanding of their perspective? Let's use this time of year to commit to making our community one that focuses on everything that is good, works to make things better, and does so without destroying other people. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say. With that, we'll move on to presentation of awards. And at this time, I'd like to call up Lisa Sekulow.
Thank you, Chairman Hamilton. I'm not sure where the camera is, but so tonight we wanted to recognize Guy Bernie Hossi III. With deepest appreciation for your 36 years of dedication and commitment to the City of Ellsworth Public Works Howard Department, we thank you for your leadership, your integrity, and your service. Best of luck in your retirement on November 30, and we will miss you.
Thank you. It's been a real pleasure.
I pulled who's in cold water.
No.
So we do have a couple of proclamations I want to read. Small Business Day proclamation. I'll read the beginning, and this is available for the community. Whereas the government of Ellsworth Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.9% of all businesses with employees in the United States are responsible for 1.8 million net new jobs in the last year. And therefore, I Dale A. Hamilton, Mayor of Ellsworth Maine, do hereby proclaim November 28, 2020, a Small Business Saturday. I want to urge the community to visit our small businesses. As everybody knows, our small businesses have been hit very hard by the pandemic, and we certainly want to see our businesses continue and thrive and make it through what is the most difficult part of their year through the winter. So I would certainly encourage that to happen. I want to thank the Ellsworth Chamber of Commerce, the Heart of Ellsworth, and Health Acadia for their work in promoting the small businesses in the community, and certainly hope that we can all come together and recognize that small businesses are a vital part of our economy. They provide jobs for our residents, make our community better, and bring visitors to our community as well. And then the second proclamation is a proclamation for World AIDS Day proclamation. Whereas HIV infection and AIDS continues to be a major health concern with approximately 1,800 people living with HIV in Maine, more than 1 million in the United States, and an estimated 37 million worldwide. And whereas the global epidemic of HIV infection and AIDS requires a worldwide effort to increase communication, education, and united action to stop the spread of HIV and AIDS, and whereas Health Equity Alliance, formerly the Down East AIDS Network, and other HIV AIDS education and prevention organization observes December 1 of each year as World AIDS Day to celebrate the progress made in the battle against the epidemic, and brings into focus the remaining changes. Now, therefore, I Dale Hamilton, Mayor of the City of Ellsworth, on behalf of the Ellsworth City Council, do hereby proclaim November 16, 2020, to be World AIDS Day in the City of Ellsworth, or actually, I corrected, December 1, 2020, to be World AIDS Day in the City of Ellsworth. And I would just say that on that front, just last week, there was an announcement of some progress in terms of a treatment medicine that advances treatment, so there is progress being made. And I think the work that has been achieved with the vaccines for COVID is a good indication of what can be accomplished when there's a lot of focus and effort and attention put towards initiatives like that. All right, unfinished business. Item nine, council order number 102000. Presentation by Ellsworth Historic Preservation Commission on a museum in the streets project and approval to authorize the expenditure of $2,000 for this project sponsored by the planning department. This item was tabled at the October 19, 2020 council meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll bring that information forward. As you remember, last meeting, there was some question as to, they had a very, an outstanding presentation. outstanding presentation about the museum in the streets. And unfortunately, they've come up with a shortfall for necessary funds needed to complete the job and see the program put through. So they've come back to the city with a request of a $2,000 expenditure to help them meet their goal. After that meeting, I met with Public Works Director Lisa Suklevich. We had a discussion about the project. And Lisa has informed me that the Highway Department has graciously volunteered to install all of the plaques and posts that support this museum in the streets, which is going to be a significant undertaking. I believe there's 19 in total. And it's a significant undertaking, going to take a couple of men, probably two weeks estimated time to get this work done, to get them all set in place. And it was our belief that this additional support, if you will, for this project on behalf of the city is significant and really should absolve us of the need or the desire to contribute additional funds to the project. So our recommendation is that the city go forward with the offering of the installation in place of any additional funds. I also met with Finance Director Jen Merchant, and she did identify a potential source should the council decide that they do want to approve the expenditure. She identified encumbered funds for the planning office professional services that could potentially be used as a source.
Councillors.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Council Order 102000 for the City Planning Department Professional Services to encumber the funds for $2,000 for the museum in the streets. Does the Speaker speak?
Second. A motion of seconds. Any discussion?
Do we know which way it's going to cost the city less money? What can we do it for less than $2,000?
Lisa, I mean, you could have a better estimation of what the installation costs will be.
So rough estimate, two guys a week is about $1,800. That's just payroll, that doesn't include, you know, overhead and that stuff, such as health insurance and such. We also, these are posts that can't be post-driven, so we actually have to hand dig or hand auger all these holes. We'll also have time dig-safing all 19 locations. So at this point, I'd say the city is looking to spend an upwards of probably $300 to $3,500 for the install. So the installation's probably more expensive than the $2,000 they're asking.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yep.
But it should be, it should be made perfectly clear that this $2,000 is not going towards the installation. The $2,000 is funds that they need to finish their, finish the project. The installation has, was already, the agreement for the, on behalf of the city and the Highway Department to install was prior to this request. So if we, if you authorize the $2,000, that's not going to absolve the need for installation. That's not what that money's for. Just so that's clear.
So I think, just quickly, sorry to interrupt you, Council Blanche. I did get a comment, an anonymous asking for speakers to continue to wear masks when speaking. They're indicating that they can hear all right through the speakers with their masks on. So I am passing that along to this council as a recommendation. That was the comment. Council Blanche.
You save that after I've taken my mask off to speak.
Gave you plenty of time to put it back.
So Mr. Moser, what you're saying is they, the, they were down in the hole around $6,000 rather than the $2,000. Is that correct?
That, yeah, that's my understanding, that the money that they've requested is not for installation costs because they weren't figuring installation costs because they had already had a verbal agreement with Lisa to have the Highway Department install them. So the funding that they're looking for is purely to finish the plaques and the project to get it ready for installation.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. One opposition. Six to one. I mean, no, there's only one. Oh, Bob, I'm sorry, did you vote against?
Yes, I vote for.
Oh, four. Okay, that's it. Thank you. All right, item number 10, discussion on the use of Spring Street as an extension of the biking and walking path sponsored by Council Blanche.
This is a continuation of a discussion that we started last month on Spring Street. For all intents and purposes, most of it is unused and in very, very poor condition. And it would be converted to an extension of the bike-ped path to go from, that extension would go from Birch Avenue to High Street. It would connect up with the existing Sunrise Trail. So I just want to bring it to the attention of the council. We will probably be asked by the state to abandon part of Spring Street from Park Street to the railroad crossing that Allen Blueberry has on Spring, just off of Main Street. Their crossing would stay and be usable to them. A preliminary plan by the state that came out that came, I got an email a couple of weeks ago.
I just, I didn't want you to put the cart before the horse.
No, I understand.
So it's just the, we hired and we teamed up with the DOT to do a planning partnership initiative to look at all the potential options for a trail to connect from where that ends at Birch to the Sunrise Trail. And that's just one of the potential options is to potentially shut down Spring Street. And I think the designers just wanted to get, as Mark's saying, is kind of get your feeling on before they put all this effort into designing to use Spring Street. They want to make sure that it's something you guys might ultimately be accepted, you know, accept. So I just didn't want, I don't want everybody to think it's definitive and definitely going in a certain location. There's going to be multiple options and multiple meetings for the public that are still part of the process.
In fact, the committee has, we have a meeting either this Friday or Monday. I don't think they've given us a final date on that yet.
So it's all just options, and it's all just, they wanted to get your temperature on the idea of potentially discontinuing Spring Street.
Sorry. First part from Birch Avenue over to Park is kind of a tough one to disallow with the involvement of where that building lays out. I drove that today, and that's almost identical to their access.
That would, from Birch to Park, it would go on the upper side of the track.
Your side, so it'd stay there, and then at that point come down.
And that would be, that would be a new path.
From there over to Allen's, that road is pretty poor shape anyway, not much. I didn't see much, didn't see much where.
So there's various options, and that's why we're having this conversation. And like I said, there'll be more coming for everybody, and they'll be sharing to the whole council when it's done. So there's options to leave the road essentially as it is, right? And turn it into a shared bike-ped car path, essentially, you know? With some striping. And then there's some ideas of shutting it down to cars and turning it just into a bike-ped path for sections of it. And that's, that's the thing, is they just want to see how receptive, if we come to this part where, you know, say, where there's no driveways, there's that section of no driveways, if we were to shut it down to car traffic, is that something the state, because it's partly in their railroad right-of-way and us, because it's partly our road right-of-way, if that's something people would be favorable to? So, that the best, the quote-unquote best option is, as Mark is saying, you know, to go on and off in each side of the railroad track depending on where you're at. But that's probably also, in some ways, the most costly. So there's different, there's different parameters they're using to give us different options depending on what we might want to move forward with.
So what are we doing tonight? Saying it's a good idea, a poor idea?
I like the way Lisa described it, more or less taking the temperature of the council and also updating the council at the same time of where this committee is headed. So.
Kind of sort of sounds like last month. We don't have anything in front of us and no scheme, and they're talking about everything. So how can we make a decision if we don't know?
There is.
I don't think it's a decision-type thing. It's just that if we came back with a, hey, this is the best option, is it something you guys would be worth considering before they spend time essentially designing it? It's not really designing it, but proposing it.
I guess personally, there were two or three sections of Spring Street I could not have any problem discontinuing and using it. As far as the combination, I'd almost, even in that, I'd think probably at that point, if it didn't interfere with the houses involved, that I'd shut it down to car traffic.
And I think that's all they're looking for is just, you know, some councils may say absolutely not. It's a road right now, it's going to stay a road.
Yep.
And then some may say, hey, it's a underutilized road in poor condition, we can better use it potentially as a bike pedestrian path under the right circumstances.
The word "cow path" comes to my mind when it comes to most of Spring Street.
So, and it is, it's a convoluted mess of, I don't want to call it massive convoluted, different, some of it's a railroad right-of-way, which would be the state, some of it's the city, which is why it's somewhat to the point that it's at now, but.
Well, you have my opinion. You can fish for some more.
I agree with Council Philip.
I agree.
And like I said, before anything obviously would happen, it would come back to the full council, especially when we get to the point where we have a more definitive plan to present.
All right. We'll pass it on at the next meeting then.
Thanks, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to.
You're fine. Thank you.
Okay, I have a comment that's come through, and I want to address this. So this was requested to be anonymous. I want, I will read this last one anonymous. The first one that I read anonymous, I did so because somebody was disclosing their private health information. I thought it was appropriate for that to be anonymous. However, this is a public meeting, and if this were all live, we would know who was speaking. And so if you want to make a comment that you want me to read, you need to present your name and where you reside. Otherwise, I will not read it to the entire, I won't read it during the meeting. You're welcome to send us emails outside of that, but during this public meeting, it has to be in that form. So I would appreciate if you would respect that portion of it. But I will read this one as one last, since I didn't state that before. Again, why are masks being taken off when members are speaking? Out of respect for our community, please keep your masks on. So that's another comment. I would say, I'll just comment that I understand the concern, and we will certainly, there is an executive order about wearing masks, so we will certainly encourage everyone to wear masks in public. I think this is one of those areas where people are trying to do their best, and at times, people are not wearing masks. I do think that we want to, as a community, be as safe as possible. I certainly would also encourage, as there's greater community spread, that individuals really need to not only look out for one another, but look out for themselves as well, and understand that there are higher-risk groups than others. And that's not to say that other people shouldn't be safe. We all should be mindful of that. So I appreciate the comments, and I think having reminders is great and appropriate. But it's also how reminders are put forth and tolerance around that. I think we can do a much better job generally on this issue in working together to promote safety without creating an environment of divisiveness. And that's not necessarily related to this comment. It just kind of goes back to what I was saying before. All right. Item Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda. All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 11, Council Order Number 112001, Discussion in Action on the Request of the Branch Lake Water Steward to Set the Branch Lake Boat and Aeroplane Sticker Fee at $0 for the calendar year 2021. Since that is the only item. Councillors.
This is something that has been done since the inception of the sticker.
Is that a motion?
Can be.
Second.
It's a really rough motion. So they have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. New Business. Public Hearing in Action on the Following Business Licenses. We do not have any coming before us this month. Number 13, Presentation and Update by Joe Cooper from Friends in Action on the Senior Center.
Hello, thank you very much for letting me come talk to you. I realized this year with everything going on that we haven't been to talk to the council in a while, and so I hope you'll let me just update you a little bit. Just, and I did make copies of this, so if I generally follow what I plan to say, I will make sure I give these copies to you there. Just like everyone else, this year, Friends in Action has faced some major and sudden changes. And first of all, I just want to give, especially those of you that may not be familiar with Friends in Action, that we have two major sides. One is our volunteer services and programs, and the other is our senior center. And Friends in Action's mission is to empower older adults and people with disabilities to thrive and to live with dignity, independently with dignity and a strong quality of life. So our volunteer services include transportation, which is offered at no charge, one-on-one, usually in a volunteer's vehicle, although we also have two vans, and friendly visits and phone calls, help with chores, grocery shopping, pharmacy pickup and delivery, and simple home repairs and ramp building, really lots of one-on-one practical tasks. So COVID has had a major impact, but we are offering all of our services except the in-home visits. They have been greatly, all of our services have been greatly reduced, both due to a drop in demand. A lot of people are staying home, their appointments have been canceled, and/or family members are helping so that they can limit people's exposure. Also, our volunteers are limiting their interactions. Some are not comfortable being one-on-one in a vehicle with someone because of their own health risks or their family members. But we've also seen an expansion of our food deliveries, grocery shopping requests, and we're partnering with 211 Maine to give direct. we're partnering with 211 Maine to give direct referral access for people needing food deliveries. We saw a dramatic increase in volunteers joining us in March and April to help with food deliveries and most of them have continued to volunteer even as the shutdown has eased. Now, the senior center was originally started as a small social coffee gathering and expanded as we were able to move into the Moore Center. We originally did that before the renovation, um, in the Bryanty Moore School. Friends in Action helped with planning the center renovation for several years and moved into the renovated space in the fall of, um, 2013. And by the way, we were found, we founded the organization in 20, um, yeah, 2003. And, um, we're a completely local funded, raise our own money nonprofit. Um, we saw, um, uh, the, uh, the need for socialization and, um, for people to have access to resources, older people. And, um, when the space was renovated, the YMCA was set up as the organization managing the facility. This was actually at our suggestion originally. Um, this meant a complicated adjustment on the part of both organizations, but, um, it's, it's worked out. It's had its ups and downs, but we have actually, both of us been, both organizations very committed to it. The city wanted the facility to be as available as possible to the community and required that, um, and also wanted there to be a senior, a use for seniors, um, older adults and required that Friends in Action, um, not charge a general membership fee to be in the senior center. And we've adhered to that. We offered enrichment classes, coffee morning, resource workshops and more, all at no charge. We charged a fee to meet our expenses for lunches and fitness programs. And just to give you a snapshot, in February of this year, our fitness program had grown to 35 weekly classes, over 100 regular participants, um, every week. We offered two lunches a week. Um, we were just on the cusp of finally having the Down East Transportation Bus come around on one of those lunch, to coincide with one of those lunches. It would go around that senior housing, make it much more accessible for residents of Ellsworth. That was actually the week before the shutdown. Um, so that hasn't happened. Um, we also offered our coffee, uh, mornings, uh, four mornings a week and also in other towns, including Stonington and Blue Hill. When COVID forced the shutdown, Friends in Action initially was forced to close all of our senior center programs. We continued the transportation and our volunteer services. We reopened carefully and in agreement with the YMCA with four classes, remember we'd had 35 before, and a separate entrance. And this was working well and we did, we started that mid-June and we continued that into, through the summer, although it was pretty, it was expensive. Um, on August 10th, the Y informed us that they would take over our rooms for the remote learning childcare. We were given three weeks to close the center and move any programs. The Y did offer to house our fitness programs. Um, this was a complete surprise to us. There'd been no prior discussions about the plans and it ultimately led to our fitness staff, um, leaving to start their own program. Since then, we are operating only our office space and have our fitness room for storage. Now, all of this sounds pretty dire and I'm not here to complain because actually it's not all dire. Um, the sudden forced closure also forced us to realize that we needed to have a more clear agreement in the future to protect Friends in Action and also to strengthen our communications with the city, which is one of this, my first step here to make sure that I'm, I'm doing that, not taking anything for granted, making sure that we're in, um, that we're doing our part to keep you informed. And we do have several positive things to report. Volunteerism is alive and well and thriving at Friends in Action and in this whole community. Every, um, collaboration that I'm part of, whether it is with food insecurity or other health-related, um, Health and Human Services nonprofits, it's pretty amazing how people are trying to step up to help other people. We see the closure of the senior center, um, which will probably have to continue throughout the whole school year. We don't have any choice, but it's a great opportunity. It gives us a chance to reassess our programs, make our involvement at the Moore Center more financially sustainable for Friends in Action. We were stretched, um, to fulfill what we understood as an agreement and, um, where we were having difficulty financially. We were getting there, but it was definitely a challenge. We have formed a task force of community members, volunteers and board members to help us with this reassessment. Very thankful to Council Chair Dale Hamilton for being a member of this committee. It really helps us when there's questions and already just one meeting, I found that to be very, very helpful and I really thank him.
You know when I said, I don't know?
Pardon?
Even when I responded, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. But it's still helpful, better to, you know, than for me to try to act as an intermediary. And even better news at the moment, and top, it's very topical tonight, the project that Friends in Action has worked on for about four years to build an outdoor ex, adult exercise area, the senior playground, is coming to fruition in the spring at the Nolton Park, provided the council approves the bids tonight. And this project has been made possible with an original challenge grant from the AARP and community members raising money through raffles, dollar by dollar, and other fundraising, uh, through grants from the Rotary Club of Ellsworth and individual donors. Um, we're officially contributing, um, $38,000 and $200, but we'll probably also have some reserve funds if needed to help with minor expenses. It has been planned with the leadership of volunteers, especially Ellsworth resident Tom Dunn, who's I believe here on Zoom tonight, and we are excited that it is finally nearing reality. It's the perfect symbol of what Friends in Action is all about, health and community and fun. We are proud that we have been able to raise the matching funds for this project and we're very grateful for the City of Ellsworth partnering to write the grant to make the project a reality. And I would love to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilors.
Councilor Catherine.
Um, with the park, as far as safety goes, uh, is there anybody that's going to be cleaning the equipment, um, for, for COVID reasons?
That's a good question, not that I bet it's not something we talked about.
Um, will there be warning labels, you know, for liability purposes, um, that states, please make sure that you've checked with your doctor before engaging in any sort of exercise program?
I don't believe there is. Um, I think that there's a general, um, most of that equipment has, the, the company that makes the equipment does provide signage. I think you do need to, the city will have to decide what kind of signage it wants. They have there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Green.
Hi. Um, so I was looking through the two bids that we received and I was just wondering, um, why we were choosing to go with Greenfield.
So those are the next two items.
Yeah, really. And I got Tommy to answer questions and Lisa.
I'm going to present on those.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But, yeah, they'll have answers to that.
Okay.
I have a general question.
Yes.
How, how, how were you allowed to be removed from the YMCA if it's the council's wishes for you to be there? I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on that.
Well, I'll defer to the council, but I, I, um, as I understand it, uh, when it was looked into, because originally the council wasn't even informed, um, it was probably, I mean, my assessment is it was an oversight, but it was, um, the agreement is between the city and the YMCA as they are the, what the less, they are the less C and we are a sub less C with the Y. So therefore it does state there needs to be senior usage, but it doesn't, um, we had a understanding of more protection than it obviously had.
So let, let me address that because, um, I also have a comment from Gordon Workman. Why was the Y allowed to remove Friends in Action from the building and why didn't, and why didn't the city intervene? I do, do want to just clarify it a little bit. Yeah, the city council was informed very late in the process, um, and what we did do immediately, um, as Joe can attest to, is convene the call, um, that day that we were notified. Um, I participated in the call, um, inter, city manager, Moser participated in the call. Um, the Y was there, Joe was there and we talked through the situation and tried to work through what the issues were and ultimately, um, it was, uh, not amicable is in the right term, but it was agreed upon that to go in that direction, um, after that. So, um, it was not a, a matter of being kicked out. There was a process, although late in the game, we did step in and tried to find a, a solution that worked for everyone in, in, in the, in the process and I'll let you.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think it was, uh, to be fair, COVID has put everybody in a lot of difficult situations and including the Y. And, um, while it was very distressing and emotionally difficult for us, um, and I will say it did hurt us. Um, it ultimately, I think, has been a, um, as I say, I'm not just, uh, being Pollyanna. I do think it is a great opportunity for us, but I do think, um, that we're hoping to have in the future a process that's, you know, there are steps to take if changes need to be made, whether, however, whatever kind of an emergency situation it is. I mean, we've been faced with things none of us ever expected and, uh, so, you know, I think that we're all doing the best that we can.
Yeah, and, and I would also commend Families in Action in terms of that, that discussion that afternoon, um, it, where it was very difficult. The reason that the whole situation emerged and it was late in the process in, in all fairness with the Y is that the Y has space and had staffing to expand their childcare program to meet an emergent need for the fact that school was going to be remote and that there would be a number of children, um, on each day that could not attend school and there were childcare issues and, uh, families were faced with their employment versus childcare. And so the Y was trying to create that opportunity to support, um, children and families in that process. Um, and so I think it, in this, you know, a, as you say, Joe, COVID has disrupted and created a lot of disruptions, um, and that process went probably faster than anybody would have liked. Um, but I, I do appreciate the fact that the end of the day, once that was all put out there, there was the, the ability to kind of move beyond that. And I think the future in terms of the agreement that's being reached, um, really puts it on a more solid footing going forward and a better understanding, um, so.
I agree, and I think that there's a lot of concern and certainly we're, we're just as much concerned that the entire community needs to be, the entire population needs to be supported, but older adults can easily be pushed to one side or forgotten. Um, isolation is a enormous concern right now, but the reality of COVID means that we can't be gathering in person. Um, I had made the Y aware that the rent was difficult and that we weren't using, and they could see we weren't using all the spaces. So it was just one of those situations. I hope that we can handle it differently in the future.
Well, thank you.
Sure, well, I thank you and I really appreciate this. I hope you'll let me come back at some point and.
And stick around for the next two items.
I am going to. Thank you very much.
Okay, item 14, council order number 112002, request to accept bids for the equipment at the Dr. Charles C. Nolton Park Senior Fitness Center.
Good evening, councilors. Lisa Seklich, Public Works Director. So I just want to preface this with, this project has been, um, as Joe said, in the works for a few years now and a lot of it was handled by the planning department, but, um, since we're to the construction phase and we are currently without a planner, I have picked up this, but I'm, may not have the answers to everything, but I hopefully have the majority of the answers. So the first part of this was that there was a bid opening on, I'm sure I got the right one, September 9th for exercise equipment for the senior exercise area at Nolton Park. We solicited multiple bids and two bids were received. The bids were thoroughly reviewed and the bid found to be complete was from Greenfield Outdoor Fitness. So by complete, I mean, and I didn't bring, didn't print out the whole thing, but if you guys looked through it, there were things such as bid bonds and, um, requirements for clear space so that we know how to put these pieces of equipment in the ground so that they don't hit each other. And there was a multitude of different things that the bids on top of just a price required. And after review, um, Greenfield was the only one that supplied everything that was requested. It was also the vendor that Friends in Action, um, preferred to begin, I mean, in their research, that was the one they were looking at as a preferred vendor, but they obviously, um, had to go through the bidding process. Um, so it's, uh, since they had the complete bid and were the pieces of equipment, um, that were requested, um, the other vendor had some items that they didn't have the item exactly, so they substituted other items, uh, but they weren't necessarily of equal, um, equal movement or, you know, exercise. So that is why we are pressing to go with Greenfield. Um, then there was also a bid opening, um, for, because Greenfield did not have the game tables and the swing set that were also requested as part of the bid, we discussed with Doug Beck, the grant, grantor, um, that we could do a, um, second, smaller bid for those specific items. And that is why there was a second bid opening on October 20th. Um, due to funding and some other considerations, the, um, swing set has been removed from the, um, project, but we still want to do the game tables. Um, the project, as Joe said, is ultimately funded by grant funds and money that Friends in Action has, um, gotten other grants and did the hard work of coming up with. There's no actual city fundage, um, for this project. So that's where we're at with the equipment portion of it.
Councilors. Any questions? Councilor Green.
Um, the question regarding Greenfield again, they didn't have any references. Whereas the other one had like a whole list of references.
There is, there is, Greenfield has a binder.
Okay.
They each have, well, Uniplay had a smaller version, but Greenfield had a binder, which I did not want to bless you all with, but, um, they did, they had a, Greenfield had a complete package with clear spaces and a design and they had, they went above and beyond, um, what was required essentially.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? What you like to do?
What you'd like to do?
Mr. Chairman. Moved to approve the request of the Public Works Director in conjunction with Friends in Action to award the bid for the Nolton Park Senior Fitness Area Equipment to Greenfield Outdoor Fitness for $23,091, and to AAA State of Play for the gaming tables for $2,605, with funds for this project coming from Friends in Action and grant reimbursement from the Main Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Second.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 15, council order number 112003, request to award the contract for installation of the fitness equipment.
So the second part of the project is for the installation of the actual equipment. So on October 29th, there was a bid opening held for the installation of the equipment. Multiple bids were solicited, but only one bid was received. The bid received was from RF Jordan for $46,498.96. Due to the budget constraints and other factors, the swing set installation would be removed from this project. Since this was a late elimination, we are asking council to authorize a not-to-exceed amount of that $46,498 to allow us time to negotiate with RF Jordan the reduction of costs for the removal of the swing set, attach to the bid documents and the bid received for the install of various pieces of equipment. And again, this project is being funded from Friends in Action and the reimbursement from the man, or Main Land and Water Conservation Fund.
Question, just to be clear, I'm assuming part of that bid for the installation is any kind of the site prep that's needed for any of the equipment in terms of?
Yes, so there's site prep that's involved is, there's some drainage that needs to be changed, grades need to be adjusted, there's concrete foundations for all the different pieces of equipment that are buried in the ground, and then...
Done.
And then the, the surface, the ultimate end surface is like crusher dust, so that it's ADA accessible, but it's not concrete. So there's fairly significant earthwork involved in that, yes.
Councilor Grindel.
Is it one, one concrete pad and they're all set, or is it?
Nope, that's what the crusher dust is. Each individual piece of equipment will be buried in the ground with concrete foundations, and then in between the pieces will be the crusher dust, or kind of like the paths that are already up there, kind of that fine dust. That'll be the actual surface that you walk on, or wheelchair on, or walker on, or...
Councilor Blitzer.
Lisa, will any of this equipment affect the placement of the ice rink?
No. The location of the equipment is, if you know where the paragola is, is basically to the, if you're looking at it, to the left between the paragola and the amphitheater.
Oh, okay.
If you use the, the interest off of, oh my God, I should blanked out, not Wood Street, but Florence Street, yes.
All right, thank you.
I do have a comment from Gordon Workman. I think it's a great idea to have an outside exercise area for the seniors, but how are we going to protect those areas from the issues that happen at Nolton Park, especially from the night activities?
I don't know that it's any different for the police than the regular playground would be.
Yeah, Nolton Park is pretty heavily monitored with cameras. In addition to that, you know, increased patrols of the area, as we do now with the initial playground, officers see people in there at night, they move them along. So we would expect to continue the same, the same level of enforcement on that particular area of the park as well.
Other questions? Comments? What you'd like to do?
Mr. Chairman. Moved to approve the request of the Public Works Director in conjunction with Friends in Action to award the bid for Nolton Park Senior Fitness Center Area Equipment Installation to RF Jordan with a not-to-exceed amount of $46,498.96 to allow negotiations for the reduction of cost due to swing set removal, and with friends, funds for this project coming from Friends in Action and grant reimbursement from the Main Land and Water Conservation Fund.
You have a motion?
Second.
You have a second? Further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you all.
All right, item 16, presentation by the code enforcement officer on potential amendments to the noise licenses and permits and property maintenance ordinances.
Good evening, everyone. Dwight Totten here. We had a workshop here a couple months ago, and there were some issues, and he brought up about the noise ordinance, the vituums, and the permits licensing through Heide's Department, and also the property maintenance ordinance that the city has now. So I went through and, without rewriting, trying not to rewrite the ordinances, we were able to come up with just some additions, I think, that will address everything. Ran it by the chief, we just, all we did was put a section in the noise ordinance that the noise meter could be used, that was questioned last year when I did use it. And I put two chats in, one was from the National Audioological Society, and another one was an OSHA chat. The threshold for 30 minutes of exposure is 90, 90 decimal. So if you can go to someone's property line and it reads 190 decimals, they're gonna have to turn the music down, or generate, well, we've had some interesting instances this summer about, out of the music, or whatever the incident might be. So I think that will address the noise ordinance pretty good. We don't get a lot of complaints. This summer, we haven't had any complaints. There were some complaints on the lake for Chief Moser, but not for us here at the city. So I think everything's working together. I think people in that, in that downtown area where we have the pub, I think it's working out pretty good. I think everyone's resolved their issues, and the owners are really cooperating with people, and I think it's going pretty good. But if you want these, because we didn't, we didn't put down for public hearing on these, because I thought there may be amendments, especially to that property maintenance one. But as these go through, if you were in agreement, we'll do a public hearing next month, and we'll work off and go that way. So on Heides, and I understand, this came about because we had a local merchant, property owner, business owner in town, and we had, when the Chinese cut their imports of lobster, the price went down. Everyone was struggling to make a living, so we never really charged before, because we didn't have a whole lot of people coming in. They would come in, set up on private property, sell that product, and go home. But what it turned into last year was long-term, they were here several weeks doing it, because there was no market at the time. So we started to identify who these people were, we started charging them the $10 business fee that we do for someone that comes and opens a business in Elsworth. You know, the reason we charge a fee, we wanted to get emergency contact for who the owners are, their names, and the permits for signage, so we set that up. So that's what we did for the lobster fishermen and the other vendors that came in, we asked them to get that one-time permit fee. And it was brought to our attention, and it is logical, you know, if you have a business in town, you're setting, you know, you're paying a good amount of taxes for your business. So in the ordinance, it was already written in a section on the transient seller's license, which is good for 30 days consecutive or spread out. If the council agrees with this, the code office will keep track of that. We'll have that license there, we'll have a tally sheet. They can renew it every 30 days if they want. But this will, this will pick up the people who come in and sell the berries and different things, and so everyone now that's selling a product will be licensed on somewhere in this ordinance, because we have some that aren't licensed. Some that I, that were here when I started that have never been in the licensed program. So I think that will work out pretty good. It speaks out to a little over $3 a day to sell your product in Elsworth, that's not too bad. I don't, I don't think it's too bad. But it's more than what we were getting by $100, so. No questions on those, we'll get to the big one. So we have a property, we've had a property maintenance...
Councilor Captain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
How's that $110 fee gonna affect craft fairs and farmers' markets?
Farmers' markets, they're already paying a fee. They're, they're under a state organization, so that's, they'll be exempt. If you, you can set up a farm stand on your own property, that's exempt, but anyone that's bringing a product into Elsworth would have to buy that, get that transient permit to sell the product.
So if there's a craft fair, let's say it's the, the Maine Coast Mall...
No, that, that's a different...
That's different?
Yeah, that's different.
Okay.
These are the roadside people that come in, that are competing with local businesses already in town. It's more on the food side of things than it is anything else. Ready? So, we all, we all know that we have vacant buildings in Elsworth, and we've tried to figure out a way to address it, and it's not an easy way. The ordinance, I can't take credit for writing this ordinance, it's actually based on international code councils property maintenance ordinance. When we put it together, we just adapted it to Elsworth and to our resources we had. But I think it was important for people to understand the seriousness of this, if the city does decide that property is a hazard, or is a dangerous build, and one of these things, it's listed on Title 17. So I took that section right out of the statutes and put it in there, and if we get to a point of sending out letters, and we get to the point where we're thinking about moving, stepping in ourselves on a Title 17, we'll bring these people in, we'll, before we send a letter or start legal action, make sure they understand how this reads. Now, I will, I will be honest with you. We, since I've been here, I think we've taken three to court. One was a junkyard up off of Main Street. I've never lost a case, but I don't always get your money back. The judge determines whether he gets your legal fees. We didn't get any legal fees on that one. He, he said we, we cleared our fees when they sold the house where the house was, and he was sale, yeah, so, then they went through foreclosure, so we didn't get that $4,000. We had another one, I think, three years ago, was out on Twin Hill. We won, we won in court on that one. The judge authorized us, the city, to go onto the property and clean it up. We hired, put it out to bid. We had $12,000 tied up in that before we had it down and cleaned out, and then probably two years later, we got the property back on taxes. That's usually what happens. If you put a financial burden on someone like that, they're gonna, they're gonna surrender it to taxes. So we're ready to go forward on this. We, I've talked to Mark on two or three buildings in the last year or so. There's probably eight buildings out there, two of the cities. So, but I would, what I would suggest is that the council think about putting some money aside in the next year's budget, so you have something upfront to do the work until you recoup that money. Because there's no money, it's nothing like that in our code enforcement budget that would handle, we could put it in if the council wanted us to, but we'd have to have some type of a slush fund, I think, to pull from. You're in a unique situation, you don't have to go to a town meeting, it's like some of these smaller towns do. You go to a town meeting, that individual's got all the buddies, and they vote it down anyway, so they keep their house at the junkyard, so. But it can be done. It's not a quick process, this is an appeal process they can go through. There's a lot of organizations out there that will help. I took one to court a few years ago, and they had an attorney that was pro bono to some organization helping them. So, you know, it's not cheap if you have to go to court, so I tend to drag my feet sometimes so we don't have to get to that point, but sometimes you have to get to that point. You can only work with them so long, and, you know, you're not going anywhere.
So Dwight, the question I have for you is, given the three different issues, would it make sense to break those up, to have a public hearing, not try to put them all on one agenda, and...
We can do that.
And space those out?
Yeah.
We can figure out which ones to schedule first and work with you around that.
Yeah, sure. Whatever the council chooses to do.
Other questions?
Dwight, what would be your recommendation for the fund, the fund amount in next year's budget, a ballpark idea?
Well, most buildings, it's at least $7,000 to $8,000 to take them down. That's just the demo fees. When they took down the old subway a couple years ago, that was like $7,000 to $8,000. We spent $6,000 cleaning up the mess out to, on Twin Hill, but there was a old camping trailer we had to take, and there was scattered stuff. The two city properties, my recommendation is to, because we have people calling, they want to, they want to buy these properties as it is now. My recommendation to the council is to put them out to bid, get them back on the tax records. Kelly Herrick and I have started the process for that bearer to get title of that repick, to make sure we have title to it. As soon as we know we have title to it, those are the neighbors we're getting calls from, that they're really interested in that law. Put it out to bid, let them clean it up, have a stipulation, indeed, it has to be cleaned up within six months of the closing or some, have, have to do his magic on that, but, but it was, you know, a whole no, we, we, I don't know, I don't really know why we kept that one on, on, like, Darwin's Hill there. We didn't put it out to bid, but we've had it now for four years, we haven't done anything with it, so. Of course, it got break, got broken into, so, but...
Would it be your recommendation to take any amount bid and put it towards the fund on the other six buildings?
Oh, that you get from those properties?
Yes.
Yeah, if you can get something above what's due taxes, yeah. The taxes on that repick are like $8,000. It is old. Right, any profit you can make can go, could, that'd be, that's an excellent idea, and it's not a taxpayer's money, really, in effect, it's money made off in the sale of property. Yeah, that would be, that would start a good fund right there.
I think we have to start someplace.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
All right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll get it scheduled for public hearings.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you for that work. Item 17, council order number 112004, request to authorize the interim city manager to enter into a 20-year bill credit agreement under the main commercial and institutional customer net energy billing and tariff rate credit program, which will enable the city to purchase bill credits associated with the generation of solar power from a distributed generation solar project located in the city of Elsworth for purposes of offsetting and lowering the cost of electricity for the city of Elsworth and its component units.
So, good evening, councilors. As promised, we're back from last month's meeting. We have, you have two agreements before you. The first agreement was the one that you authorized me to execute last month on the industrial road agreement. The second one is the one that we postponed until this month, which was the Mariahville Road Agreement. The reason it was postponed was some fine tuning and some distributing of the actual accounts. All of that work has been done, and as of today, the two agreements are in a form, which is, they are ready for execution. Just to kind of bring you up to speed, since our last meeting, we went back with the industrial road project, and we went through and double-checked all of the accounts that were assigned to that project, to make sure that we were, if you all remember... that project to make sure that we were, if you all remember correctly, we were using a cascading method of dispersion of the credits. And so, there was some concern about the enterprise accounts getting a, a excessive amount of the credits due to the fact that they're, they're large consumers, and that that would somehow diminish the, the effectiveness on potential lowering of tax rates for, for our taxpayers. So, we went through those accounts and prioritized some of the non-enterprise accounts in the cascading method, so that those accounts would, would get the largest amount of the tax credits, excuse me, of the power credits, and then ensuring that the enterprise accounts, which again are the largest consumers, maintained a high level of, of reduction as well. So that's, that's what kind of held us up on that, was, was double-checking those accounts and getting those accounts in place. Moving forward to Mariahville, that had some unique challenges, because we were, as we were working through the industrial road, we realized that we needed additional accounts. So we began applying the smaller school accounts, what are, what are identified as school accounts, to the industrial road, and by the time we were done, we realized that we only have the two major school accounts left for the Mariahville Road. So the high school and the elementary middle school are the only two accounts that will be on that agreement, covered under that agreement, and thirty-two point two six percent will be EEMS, and twenty-two point nine three percent will be Ellsworth High School. Now, if you remember from the last time we spoke, the distribution for this program is specific percentage assignment, as opposed to the cascading, because we're only gonna be consuming approximately fifty-five point one nine percent of the credits generated from that second, second location. So, the company, Sunraise, will be going out to bid to sell the remainder of those credits to other, other consumers, so therefore, a cascading method is not realistic to use under those circumstances. So, we've gotten the, brought the Mariahville agreement forward tonight, and asking for authorization to execute each of these, well, we've already received it for the industrial road, but asking for authorization to execute the Mariahville contract. And, outside of that, I think, unless you all have questions, I do have Sarah and Woody on Zoom, they're the expert, matter experts that have worked tirelessly through this entire process to get these contracts here before you. Also, I would like to extend a thank you to the, the committee members who have also done a tremendous amount of work getting these projects before you tonight.
Counselors.
Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question, Woody and Sarah, I'm sure you could answer this, but I was looking at the projected monthly energy numbers. And, and why in June, July, and August, when school isn't in session, would it be triple the number of, for instance, January in usage? Any idea?
Right, if you can hear me, now, having done an energy audit on these facilities, my only guess for summer increase use is air conditioning, but probably someone in this room can answer the air conditioning question in the two schools better than I can. And often you will see in schools, the administrative area may be separated and air conditioned for the summer in case they're working. That would be my only guess, and I would refer to anyone at DPW or Sarah if you want to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I think the projected monthly energy, you referred to the exhibit to the contract?
Yes.
Yes.
So, that, that, that is, is a reflection of the expected monthly energy that would be generated by the, the project, so it would be normal for a fuller facility to generate more energy in the hot summer months than in the colder, darker, shorter days of January.
Okay, so this has, so this has nothing to do then with the, the power that's used, it's power generated?
Right. It's power generated, and it goes to, the reason it's there is because if the, in the contract it says if the, if the generator facility in actuality does not generate, you know, I think it's fifty, either fifty or seventy percent, I can't remember, I'm doing a lot of these deals, but, on, on a continued basis, and there could be a right of termination, basically, if it's underperforming, so that's why it's there. You, you raise an, you sort of, your question is a little bit, it raised an implicit issue, which is, it could be that the school is not, not having a lot of electric usage during the summer when these credits are being generated. And, under the program that is set up by the state and that energy billing program, if, if it is the case that, you know, those accounts are lower in the summer and can't use the credits, they can be banked, and they, you just can use them over the next twelve months, so it is not a use it or lose it in that one month period, you do have a full year.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? Counsel Captain.
I'm just wondering if any more work was done on the, the social costs associated with the sourcing of the materials?
Yes, I, I can address that the Sunraise went back to their folks after the last month's meeting, and they were informed that they aren't using the Long Eye solar panels, they'll be using Trina Solar. And, although they, they were very concerned by the, the issues that you raised, the, they went back and were informed that the decision was already made to go away from Long Eye. They didn't, they didn't, weren't made aware of any specifics as to that it was specifically relating to your concerns, but that it was a decision made based on price and availability and other things that they, that the decision was made. But they did do some research into this Trina Solar and have not found similar types of concerns that you raised at the last, at last month's meeting.
Thank you.
Counselors.
Are you gonna open it up for any public comment?
Oh, yes, this, yes, this is a public hearing. Thank you. Public hearing, we did the public hearing last?
We already done.
We already.
Did the public hearing in those board, last councilor.
The public hearing has been, yeah, we did that last meeting, sorry. But if the public wants to comment, they're free to do so. I don't have any in front of me. Sarah, motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to authorize the interim city manager to enter into a twenty-year bill credit agreement under the main commercial and institutional customer net energy billing tariff rate credit program, which will enable the city to purchase bill credits associated with the generation of solar power from a distributed generation solar project located in the city of Ellsworth for purposes of offsetting and lowering the cost of electricity for the city of Ellsworth and its component units.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you both to Sarah and Woody for your time, effort, expertise. All right, we added an item, so the new item is number eighteen, which is the HCTC boiler. The remaining two items will be renumbered accordingly, number nineteen and twenty. So, item eighteen is the HCTC boiler, and right on time is Superintendent Higgins. It's all yours.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having me. I did submit a memo to city manager and board member requesting authorization for transfer and expenditure of funds to replace the failed HCTC boiler, actually, that is the primary boiler. Ellsworth School Committee voted that their Tuesday meeting evening to approve a low bid of eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars from Honeywell. And also recommended funding sources as follows, first was from the HCTC Capital Reserve account. For the council's information, this is an account that was established back in two thousand eighteen to support the replacement of the HCTC roof, a project that we have been monitoring over the years. That capital reserve account was established in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. Through the bidding process, when we did the roof, a successful vendor came in well below that amount. Currently, twenty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars remains in that account. We're seeking authorization to expend the remaining balance to support the boiler replacement. Second source of funds will be to use is the HCTC fund balance, and also for councilors. By law, for the past two years, we have been required to maintain a separate fund balance for career technical education, i.e. Hancock County Technical Center. The current audited fund balance, after applying seventy thousand eight hundred and three dollars to the current year budget to offset the caused expenditures, is a hundred sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-four cents. We are requesting authorization to expend sixty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-four from this balance, leaving the balance at one hundred thousand for subsequent years. I would also note that in addition to the school committee approving this recommendation, the Hancock County Superintendents will meet weekly, and also meet with the Hancock County Technical Center Advisory Committee, approve this expenditure of funds by consensus, it's not a vote, but it's by consensus, and all school districts have contributed to that amount. And Hancock County Technical Center Advisory Committee, which is made up of board members from each of the sending school districts and superintendents, support the expenditure of these funds by vote. The remaining thirty-six hundred twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, we're requesting authorization to transfer that amount from the existing Ellsworth School Department Capital Reserve account, which was established in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars as a starting point to be used for the Deluise Stadium lighting replacement project. That has been kind of put on hold by COVID, but we're asking how that transferred into the CDT capital reserve account to pay for the balance of the boiler project. Honeywell is ready to do the work, and we have them scheduled as soon as the boiler comes in. And on a side note, HCTC was fully remote today because the backup boiler, which was of the same vintage as the boiler that failed and was not repairable, went down Sunday afternoon. Honeywell was on site and was able to repair that today, so it'll get back in operation starting tomorrow. Do you want to entertain any questions?
Mr. Higgins, I, I just have one question. By any chance, is Honeywell offering a two-for-one offer?
Well, at the time we got the bid, Councilman Lanschaff, we didn't know about the second one, but, no, we haven't broached that subject with them.
Damn.
Superintendent Higgins, just a quick question, just on the, the HCTC fund balance, that hundred and sixty-two thousand roughly, is that, is that dedicated from the, all the communities in terms of the, I know the funding is very complex in terms of how it's set up, but, and you don't have to get into the whole details, but is that partially coming from the tuition that's paid by the other schools, or the, or their share, their support, I should say, for the tuition?
Yes, the Reader's Digest version is the funding for HCTC comes from the subsidy from the state, which used to flow to all the sending districts, and they pay that in the form of tuition for the students that they send to HCTC. Starting a couple of years ago, all of the subsidy flows to the Ellsworth School Department because we own and operate the facility. So, the subsidy that was flowing to other districts comes in. With the exception of this year, which we use the fund balance to offset those costs, we have assessed a per pupil amount to each district for the students that they send. So the short answer to your question is yes, all of the districts contribute either directly or indirectly to that fund balance for CTE.
Thank you. Counsel Captain.
So what's the bottom line that would come from the Ellsworth taxpayer? The entire amount?
Well, indirectly, indirectly, there would be a good portion of the amount. The source, source of funds that we're talking about, when you look at the capital reserve account, the funds that were put into that came into the Ellsworth School Department as a combination of money that we take in at school subsidy, which comes from the state, which does come back to Ellsworth taxpayers, also comes from the local assessment to Ellsworth taxpayers, and also comes in the form of tuition dollars assessed to districts that send students to the Ellsworth School Department. As for a specific percentage that is allocated directly to Ellsworth taxpayers, I can't give you that, but it is part of the Ellsworth school budget. The fund balance I just explained to the chairman, the source of those funds, and the capital reserve account to Ellsworth School Department, money was put into that from the existing fund balance, which is what's left over at the end of the year, when you take a look at when you had four revenues above and beyond what you anticipated, and expenditures hopefully below what you budgeted.
You don't think this was caused by COVID, do you? So we could use some of the COVID funds? You don't have to answer, you don't have to answer that question.
This is not looking like COVID, although with two thousand twenty being the year that it is, it wouldn't be a surprise. But no, unfortunately, the COVID relief funds, that's not eligible expenditure.
All right, counselors. Sarah, motion? What is the, do you have the actual, the dollar amount, the total?
Eighty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Eighty-nine thousand eight hundred.
Okay, thank you.
So this has to be replaced, right?
Yes. Councilor Lyons is studying to replace Honeywell, who is the vendor that has serviced that school for a number of years. They assessed that it was not repairable. We were concerned that the other boiler, which was installed the same year, was going to meet the same fate, but fortunately, we were able to fix it, but no, that is not repairable. And, when I talk about the vintage, you know, Councilor Lyons, you're familiar that that school was constructed in the late seventies, using the original boilers.
In the motion, do we have to say exactly the money from each fund source, or can we just say move to approve the request?
As proposed.
I would say as presented this evening, I'll give the memo from, you know, I'm not trying to play a role in it. But you would say as presented this evening?
Okay. Move to approve the request for authorization of transfer and expenditure of funds to replace the HCTC boiler as presented this evening. Second?
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Higgins.
Thank you very much, members of the council, I appreciate it.
Item nineteen, executive session to discuss consultations between a body or agency and its attorney concerning legal rights and duties of the body or agency, pending or contemplated litigation settlement offers in matters where the duties of the public's body or agency's counsel, the attorney's client pursue into the code of professional responsibility clearly conflict with this subchapter, or where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the state, municipality, or other public agency or person at a substantial disadvantage in accordance with MRS A Title I, Chapter thirteen, Section four oh five, Paragraph sixty.
So move.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, executive session, and we will be coming out of executive session to report. All right, we're back from executive session. All right, we're back from executive session.
Mr. Chairman. Move to approve the settlement agreement with Maine Coast Medical Realty Incorporated as presented in executive session.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn.
You have a motion? All in favor? We are adjourned.